Good evening and welcome to the Joint City Council Regular Meeting and the successor agency to the former Series Redevelopment Agency and the successor agency to the Stanislaus Series Redevelopment Commission. Tonight, again, it's Monday, January 22nd, and so at this time can we have the roll call vote, please? A roll call.
Council and agency members, Dorossette.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein.
Here.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Here.
Mayor and Chairperson Vieira.
Here. Okay, next we'll have the invocation by Chris Gregson, please, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, I thank you for the opportunity to come together. Lord, I pray for unity, I pray for teamwork, Lord God, and I pray that our city council and mayor work together for the better of Series. I pray that you would guide them, lead them, Lord God, and I pray for a calm head, true heart, Lord God, and I pray that you would just work in this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have no presentations, but we will move to citizens communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I'm going to start. I have one speaker card, and that's from Anne Marie Montgomery, who wants to talk about the library.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and everybody else. My name is Anne Marie Montgomery, and I'm the Series Ranch Library Supervisor. There are many free programs going on at the library this spring, the end of winter and going into spring, a lot of things going on. Every Monday at 10:30, we have Wiggle Worm Storytime, which is a storytime and an early literacy program for the youngest children. Every Tuesday at 10:30, we have preschool storytime, followed by We Move and Play, and that's at 11:30. We also have We Move and Play Program, 11:30 on the first and third Wednesdays of every month. Every Thursday at 3:30, the Series Library hosts a children's program. We have performers, crafts, activities, or we're going to have a teddy bear sleepover this spring. We're going to have a puppet show and a magician coming up pretty soon. This next month, we're going to have a Lego Play Day, a pearler bead craft, puppets, Valentine crafts, and coloring program for citizens of all ages. We have a book club for adults now. The Series Library Book Club meets on the fourth Wednesday of every month at 11:30. Anyone can come by at any time and pick up a book and join the Series Book Club and have a nice conversation with some people about literature. It's a great way to make friends. We've got a nice group of people coming now. Signups are being taken for monthly classes on computer basics, email basics, basic word processing. Space is limited, so we do need people to sign up early. All programs, information is available on our website, stanlibrary.org, and in the printed schedule available at every library in Stanislaus County. All programs at the Series Library are free of charge, and everyone is welcome. These programs are brought to you through the 1/8 cent dedicated sales tax that supports the library, as well as the continuing support for the Series Friends of the Library Group, who's also there looking for members. So if anyone is interested in helping out the Series Friends of the Library, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? Please come forth and state your name.
Jean Yeakley, Series. Mayor, Mayor, in the past, you have asked that maybe Series citizens can do their part to help with the different problems with the city. One of those areas you mentioned is signage around Series. Seems that many individuals and groups have taken upon their own agenda to place signs for selling items to political and social purposes at different times of the year here in Series. Some of these individuals are here tonight and sit on the city council, and in the not-so-distant past have posted their "Vote For Me" political signs on private property or properties around our city. Why is it that when individuals or groups that are supposed to have the best interests in our city continue to go beyond the code of the city of Series and violate them? A type of being above the law. This creates a monkey see, monkey do mindset. These individuals or groups posted something here on this property, so I guess I can too. Seems that any vacant piece of property in our city is fair game for posting anything without recourse from the governing bodies of Series. One particular property is at the northeast corner of Mitchell Road and Service Road, the Walmart property. According to Walmart corporate headquarters in Bentonville, Arkansas, and Series Walmart manager Judith Skinner, Walmart's standing policy is there is to be no signage of any kind, political, selling, advertising, et cetera, on any of their properties, regardless if it is an active Walmart store or a vacant property that Walmart owns. One noticeable issue is the recent signs around the town that have been posted by the Lions Club. A very nice organization in many, many ways, but they have went onto private property and posted signs, which those signs have printed on them about the American Legion Hall, which is part of the city of Series Park and Recreation Department. No signs should be posted in Series unless the guidelines of the city are carried out, as those violating those codes should be punished with a fine of at least $100 for each sign and on said property or properties that do not have signed permission from legal property owners. And persons or group or organization or companies should have a signed paper lodged with the city of Series acknowledging that said individuals know that the current codes for signs in our cities. Shame on those people who continue to use others for their own gain. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
My name is Sheila Brandt. I'm a citizen here in Series. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was kind of thrown into this. Brandy was going to stand up this evening and talk about the water tower, but she's running a little bit late. She's getting ready to go to her son's graduation from the Air Force boot camp, so she called me and said, hey, can you present something? So I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of details right in front of me, but I did want to tell you that we are going to be having a fundraiser. It's called Dinner Under the Tower. It's going to be on June 16th, Father's Day weekend. It's going to be $25 per person, and it's going to be a fundraiser to help with the water tower. We're going to have a nice dinner, fun events for the evening. Another fundraiser that we have planned is going to be in August for a carnival family night. We also are going to be in, have a float in the street fair. We're going to have an information booth at the street fair. And our next meeting, if anyone would like to come, is on February 28th at 6:00 PM at Alfonso's. And I just also, off the water tower, great job, you guys downtown looks excellent. I love the banners. I love the 100-year centennial banner. That looks absolutely great, and I just want to tell you guys, I think it looks great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
My name's Lee Brandt, and I'm a citizen of Series. I'm not going to talk about the water tower, because he's got it covered. I was just curious, because a couple, three weeks ago, I went over to one of the big-box stores over on Hatch Road, mainly Home Depot, and the parking lot was atrocious. I mean, it was just a total mess. And then, a few days after that, I had occasion to go over to Food for Less, and I noticed at the Food for Less, and I've noticed this several times, and I'm sure some of you guys have too, they have like a maintenance person that runs around in a little janitorial cart, you know, and they, you know, knock down cobwebs, they do windows and stuff like that at that shopping center. And I was just wondering, is there something that can be done? I mean, you know, suggested to, I mean, of course, of course, we've got the up-and-coming Walmart and stuff like that, and I know they maintain their own buildings, but I don't know if there was, you know, because I want to just kind of, I want to start a campaign or something like that to clean up Series. You know, I mean, there's the couch and stuff right down here that I'm sure we all drove by, and there's a couch over there by, you know, in our area, you know, and just, I have several ideas that I got to approach different, I guess, social groups here in Series, you know, about helping out, you know, to clean up stuff, and I just wanted to point that out, you know, the fact that I know, I don't, I noticed that, and I didn't know if anybody else had.
Sure.
And I don't know how that works. You know, I don't know if it's.
Mr. Wells, is there, is there some, I mean, obviously, it's a code enforcement thing, but is there something?
On parking lot cleanup? I mean, generally speaking, those are all private contracts? So those big-box stores and these stores have private contract for their after-hours, and generally, if you were to drive through those shopping centers at 2:00 in the morning, that's generally when they're doing those type of sweeping activities. That's all privately contracted. The, you know, some of those shopping centers work together, and they'll contract, you know, with one entity to handle multiple properties. Generally, we found the most success by just going directly and talking to the store manager and bringing it to their attention that way. Our code enforcement activities are most effective with, you know, straight communication with the store manager, so that's the way we would address that particular concern. I had not heard of that complaint at Home Depot, but that's something we'll look into. In terms of your other questions, come see me, Lane, and we can come up with some ideas.
Oh, well, okay. All right. Thanks. Mr. Klein?
Mr. Brandt. Lee, and, you know, a while back, I had brought up something similar to what you said about cleanup or trying to encourage the Hatch Road Business District. You know, I was in Merced visiting one of my kids, and in certain areas, because of the drought and the drought tolerance and everything like that, there's areas in Merced that have taken out that medium as far as the shrubs and stuff and put in artificial turf, where the contractor that's taking care of the parking lot has, they just have to blow it off and keep it, you know, so it looks good and looks fresh and looks presentable. But the problem is, is the response, I, not really the response, but what I've been told is, you know, it's up to the individual property owners on what they can do.
Right, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And, you know, it's almost like some of the code enforcement that we're going through now and what we're doing with our general plan update, because I do agree with you. And even, you know, you look at the, in front of Kmart, and you're looking through Burger King and stuff like that, where, you know, the mediums are in bad shape. If there's something we can do to encourage that Hatch Road business, you know, but ultimately, it's their expenditure, and so, you know, we need to do something, I believe, as a city, to encourage them to do something to clean that up.
Right.
But ultimately, it still goes back to them, because it's their expense.
Right. Well, you know, it's just like the, you know, the, what is it, the grease, you know, helps the squeaky wheel or something like that, you know, and I understand, you know, everybody here wants to keep, you know, Series clean or get Series clean and keep it that way, you know, and I just want to, you know, just let everybody know that, you know, I want to plant the seed of, you know, the fact that, you know, okay, you know, look at the Food for Less, you know, look at that person who's doing that. You know, yeah, I'm positive, it's probably the owners, you know, they put it on, you know, different people that, you know, like Roundtable and stuff like that, they pay X amount of dollars, you know, towards the cleanup and stuff like that, but, you know, like, have an example. You know, I mean, there's the other shopping center that's totally kitty-corner from there, you know, where the 7-Eleven is and stuff like that. You know, I don't know, you know, if there's, maybe it's a business opportunity for somebody, you know, to start a service, you know, but I just wanted to plant the seed, you know, and make it public, you know, that, hey, you know, it is possible to keep our private lands clean, we just got to kick people in the tail to get them to do it.
And I do agree with you. It's getting the conversation started. It's just like, you know, a few years ago with the shopping carts and everything like that. You know, a lot of businesses here put those locking wheels on, so if you go so far in the perimeter of their shopping center, they lock, and there's other businesses that hire a contractor, that all they do is go around and collect shopping carts.
Right.
So they chose not to put those on, but if you notify the store where the shopping cart is, they pick it up within 24 hours.
Right.
So, you know, it's just getting the dialogue and everything going and trying to get people to encourage it.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Rhino?
I have a question for Lee. When you talk about how the parking lot looks, is it, is it that there's trash in it, or is it the landscaping?
Oh, no, it's trash.
Trash.
It's just trash. The landscaping, I understand. I mean, I understand, you know, the, with the drought and stuff like that, you know, and it, and, yeah, I could go through there and, you know, clean up the landscaping, you know, whatever, a little bit, but my impression was just the trash. I mean, you know, it's like old pieces of lumber, you know, like, somebody gets something in a box, and they take the part out of the box, they just leave the box there.
Well, as far as landscaping, a lot of the newer development, when they were approved, they had to sign a landscape maintenance agreement, so the city has that ability to go after them, because we do have that for a lot of the newer places. We used to have a shopping cart app, and I don't know what happened to that, but it was wonderful when Joe Wren was here. If you saw one out on the street, you could just stop and take a picture, and as long as you took a picture of the wheels and the name of the store, you clicked on it, and it sent the GPS coordinates to the store, and then they knew where to come and pick it up. And so, the city didn't really have to get involved with spending time calling different businesses, and I don't know what happened to that app.
The developer of the app stopped supporting it, so.
Which was too bad.
Functions.
I was doing a lot of snapping. It was fun.
Well, you know, and I, you know, and I totally understand that, you know, it would be put on, you know, but like Mike said, you know, it says, get the dialogue, you know, started, you know, but, so, and I understand that, you know, it falls back on code enforcement, and I do understand the funding on stuff like that, you know, but, you know, maybe if we can just get, you know, people to take a little pride in their own area, you know, whether it be a private entity or a commercial, you know, just take a little pride, you know, I mean, they have, you know, Reno has the site of the biggest little city in the West. Why can't Series have the site of the cleanest little city in the West?
Well, or if enough people go in and tell the store manager, hey, this, your parking lot is a disgrace, what are you going to clean it up? If they get enough comments like that, they should maybe start taking care of it themselves.
See, I said something to the cashier, you know, when I made my purchase. I said, you know, I said, your parking lot's atrocious. She goes, well, she goes, I'll call the manager right now, and she turned around and picked up the phone. Now, whether she just faked it, I have no idea, you know, but, you know, I just wanted to, like Mike said, you know, start the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Yeakley, in answer to the gentleman's question, in the past, when Frank was still in coenforcement, there were some issues in my own neighborhood about people parking cars on the lawns and other issues, and he says, well, you know, we had to change something, so now we call it a nuisance and we can cite him on it. In his case, which we've all seen in the city, all the garbage everywhere that you look, it seems like, in a store situation, because it becomes a nuisance, can't the city write them a letter or notify them that they have a certain time to clean it up? Instead of, I know they have the right to take care of their own property, but it's still in our community, so is it feasible to get a notice to those businesses?
Yes, it is, and I have a lot of experience with that. I, and in this case, I'll go speak with the manager at Home Depot, but I just want to assure you that I've done a similar situation with the Dollar Tree store. Behind their store was atrocious.
Yeah.
When I went back there, and the boxes where everything were spewed everywhere, I asked to speak to the manager, and I said, I asked him if he would clean up the back area, and the first comment I got was, well, who the hell are you? And then, when I said who I was and how I'd like it to be cleaned up, it fell on deaf ears, and so, we took it to the next step. The city sent them a letter. We got no response or no change in action, so we went up the corporate ladder, and we kept going, and eventually, we had to threaten to fine them with, I believe it was the, a fine if they didn't do it, and they adhered to it for a short period of time, and before you know it, they were back doing it again. So there is a certain pride of ownership and/or lack thereof. So I can say, we'll do what we can, but again, it is a private business, and we'll do whatever we can. We, I agree with you, we would love to be able to do as much as we could with as many code enforcement people as we had, just to try to stay on top of people, but it's more of an episodic deal to where we deal with them as they come up.
Yeah.
And some people respond, and some people don't, so.
That's right.
We'll continue to do it, and in this case with Home Depot, I'll go talk to the manager and see if we can get something. Again, I, I mean, my track record is 0 for 1, so we'll see what happens on the next one.
Those particular things you're talking about, too, that eventually, when they're pounded into the different businesses after a while, they're going to have to conform anyway, so maybe there's some kind of domino effect that will affect everybody, and then they'll comply.
Well, I threatened to pick up all the trash and take it to the manager's house and put it in his front yard and see how well he liked it, and it still didn't seem to matter, so.
Let me know, I got a pickup truck.
Okay. Thank you. But we are looking at some other creative ideas as to, you know, could we put bailers back there to help them out, to do it in exchange for, so, there's some creative things we're trying to do, but again, even the locking bins and other things for the trash, but it hasn't worked as well as we would hope.
Hello, I totally agree with the whole cleanup process. I actually had a conversation with my family. We lived, we grew up in Series, you know.
By the way, what was your name? I'm sorry.
Martina. My name's Martina, sorry. But, yeah, I had an idea. We were talking about it, and I know others, I know Patterson for sure, I don't know about other cities, but they do a high school senior project to where they have to do stuff like that. They have to complete a certain hours of community service. So I was talking about it, and I figured, why don't we make it a high school thing to where, I mean, Central Valley High School's already a college prep school, and they look at a lot of community service hours. If we made it maybe a senior project or just open to all the high schoolers, make it, you know, this is going to be a community service thing, if you go out there, and it's just, we're cleaning up Series, but it also gives them the community service hours they get.
Sure. Perhaps our two members on the school city commission can bring that up.
They actually currently do that. All the schools, all the clubs have to have X amount of hours of community service done. And also, I think we're having Love Series come back, is that correct?
That is correct. The churches have agreed to take a lead on that activity, and it will be coming back this year, scheduled in April.
So there's a lot of different things that are, you know, obviously, it's the whole process. Even though we do Love Series one day, you know, you've got 364 more days that we're going to be waiting for it again to clean up. But again, I think just having a little bit of awareness in regards to, obviously, if you own a business and/or, you know, you're a graduate of Central Valley High School?
Yeah.
You know, maybe you could reach back to those, because there's so many different ways to get community service hours, it's just not cleaning up.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
Can I ask an answer?
Sure. Briefly, please.
If you can answer this.
Yeah, I talked to somebody recently about why the Sheriff's Department doesn't allow inmates to pick up trash and stuff anymore. I kind of wondered about that. You know, cities around the United States, they still do those things. I guess it's up to the Sheriff's Department if they let them do that, but why not put those people to work? I'm sure they were out there before, and what's the reason they can't be there now?
It's my understanding that they don't have to do it anymore, so they don't have to volunteer, and whenever they do, the sheriff probably puts them on projects in the county. And we've been without a code enforcement officer for some time now. Our newest one's going to start February 5th.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. For that, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare conflict of interest on any of the 14 consent calendar items or one discussion item? Hearing none, that will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
11.
12.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item 11 or 12? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move for approval of 1 through 10, 13 and 14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Dorossette.
Yes.
Council and agency member Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Item number 11, resolution number 2018-09, amending the classification plan to create the classification of police officer recruit. Councilmember Rhino?
I'm curious why we're going to require three-year commitment from these individuals rather than a longer commitment, say, five years? Did we check with what the standard is other cities do?
As Martina comes up, that's the three years is generally what we found to be acceptable, and I know Martina did a lot more of the research, so I can let her provide some color to that.
Yeah, it is pretty, it is pretty standard to use three years, so we didn't actually decide to use something greater than that.
But we could if we wanted to?
If you wanted to make it longer, we could. The agreement that we attached is basically just a draft. It was information only so that you guys could see that we had put together a reimbursement agreement for whoever ends up being a candidate in that position. But, yeah, if you wanted it to be five, because it's not in the resolution, so it would be easy to adjust if that was something you wanted to do.
Well, I would think the police chief would want someone to commit to five years versus three. I mean, wouldn't you hate to spend all of that money, and basically, you get them trained, and then in three years, they're leaving? Is there, is there some downside to the five years?
Well, it could limit the amount of people that actually apply for it. If they have to stay for five years, I don't mean that in a bad way, but with this, younger people that are working now, they don't plan on staying at a job forever.
Well, five years isn't forever.
No, but it is a long time for some, but.
Two and three is a long time for some now.
I'm open for five. I mean, the academy costs about $4,000, and plus the amount, the academy's four months long, so you're looking at however much that costs in employee pay.
Well, I would like to see the five years, and then, my other question is, do the process, so you... And then my other question is, do the process, so you, you put out a notification just like you are for any other job, but do you do any kind of a background or?
Yes.
You do a background?
We'll do a full background as a police officer before they get sent to the academy. Right now, our only difficult thing is actually getting some space in the academy. Everyone is sending their recruits to this police academy here in San Slos County. It's only four months long. It's the only one that is four months. All the rest of them are six. And we don't have anyone teaching in this class. I hope that that changes, but they do get preference if they have instructors there. So right now, we're on the waiting list for the April class. I'm not guaranteed that yet. So if you approve this tonight, we're not even guaranteed that we'll get in this April. The next class is in September.
Okay.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Klein?
With, with the comment that you made, Chief, is three years about the time it's going to take to recoup our cost?
I would say that's plenty of time, but.
No, because wouldn't you want to recoup your cost and get a little more bang for your buck before they move on to other departments? You know, I mean, if it takes three years to recoup your cost and all of a sudden, they move on to Modesto, Turlock, Stanislaus County, or move over to the Bay Area, wouldn't you rather, you know, at least get another year out of them for a little bit more bang for your buck instead of just putting them through and every three years, you're retraining and retraining and putting more people through the academy?
I'm, I'm, I'm open to make it four or five years. The problem that has been in the past with some of the other agencies in this county is that they're actually losing these officers or cadets during the academy. So as an example, they sent, they also sent several down to Fresno Academy and housed them. But by the time the academy is over, all of the other agencies that pay a lot more money snagged them and they actually quit. So.
But we can be recouped for our costs, right, if they do that?
Yeah. I'm not really concerned about three years of service, but because I just don't want them to stop in the middle of the academy. So that's kind of why we're staying local. We're trying to get this academy here or maybe the one in Stockton, but we're not going to go any further than that because then we'd have to pay for housing probably, things like that. It wouldn't be feasible. So like I said, I'm open if the council would like to have it four or five years. I'm fine, but three is fine with me.
The argument against that, though, is recognizing who we're competing against other cities. And if our requirements are more strenuous than someone else and that recruit who's comparing apples and apples and saying, "Well, it's only a three-year commitment in Modesto," what is a five-year commitment in Series, you know, that's something, we're having a very difficult challenge attracting these recruits. You're going to say here, yes, I understand completely about recouping those costs, but it costs us every time we do a recruitment. And it's really about getting the right people in here as soon as possible. You know, can it work at five years? Of course. We've got examples, we've got two examples who use the same process and are still here 20 years later. Fantastic. However, you know, we've got to recognize that the competition that we're in for talent, especially on the law enforcement side, is tremendously difficult. And, you know, we're competing for that same talent that these other cities are, that could be something that'd come against us.
But if Modesto only has a few recruit positions open and Turlock has one and somebody wants to stay in the valley, they're going to apply for Series and they're going to see that it's a four or five-year commitment and they're going to recognize that. I don't, I don't think that if Modesto is three years or four years and we're four or five, that we're not going to get any applicants because there's still individuals out there that want to be police officers and they want a city to sponsor them and pay for it.
You know, and another thing I didn't see in the staff report, but you brought it up, is does Modesto City have anything like this in place? Does Turlock have anything in place? Does the sheriff's office have anything in place? And if they are, what's their requirement or timeframe? You know? So if we're going to compare apples to apples, you know, we need to know, is Modesto four? Maybe we want to go to four.
They're all the same as what we're asking for, three years.
They're all three years. But I, I think we're making more out of this than really is. I personally don't think three or five years makes a difference because they're only talking $4,000. And if somebody's going to jump ship at three years, four years or five years, they're more than likely going to get paid a bigger salary and that money doesn't really mean anything. So by putting this in there, that doesn't necessarily keep somebody around any longer. It just tells them when they're going to not have to pay that amount of money. But I can tell you, if I was stealing somebody's employee, I'll say, "I'll pay you your four grand for you and have you come out." So I think this is, I mean, you know, it's a trivial thing. It doesn't really matter. I'm probably on the line of, "Let's just make it five years so at least we recoup some of the money." But because I don't think it's going to matter whether they get to a point where they say, "Man, if I, I got to wait three years versus five, I'm going to take that job." The reality is, if they're in the job two years and somebody comes and offers them 10 or 15 grand more, the $4,000 doesn't mean a thing at that point. So.
I just sit there and I think that, you know, I mean, this is, Chief Smith's the expert and this is what we're seeing across the valley, or at least within our area. And, you know, I'm not an expert in police by any means. I think that we as a council need, and this is my voice, need to support in regards to what he's saying with the three years. You know, again, I mean, if I had more background knowledge in regards to this aspect and really understood it, I do understand it, just as you stated, Mayor, they're going to jump, they're going to jump anyway. I mean, realistically, if you sit there and think about it, between Modesto and Turlock, they probably pay more, a little bit more than we do. So if there's a three-year period, they're going to take that anyway. Doesn't really make a difference, but.
Okay. All right. Well, at this point, I'll open up to the public. Does anybody want to speak on this item? Let's come.
John Warren, Series. Three years or five years? Three years. A person might not wait. You know, if they got five years to go, they may leave before that five-year period. But if they have just three-year commitment, and they're going to leave anyway and a large percentage do, we don't have very many Pat Solivans that stick around as long as he did. They're going to go and it's probably going to be around three. So I think the resolution that you have would be fine. The chief supports it. They've done some research and I think the council's kind of leaning that way. So that would be my take on the matter.
Okay. Just come forward. That's okay. You don't have to raise your, you're welcome to speak. Sure. That's okay.
Okay. So how young are candidates as far as, you know, whenever they sign up? Like what's the age?
Need to be 21 years old when they're.
21 years of age?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm a, I'm a psychology major at Stan's Day. I don't have my, my degree or anything yet, but you know, we, we study about this and about, you know, mindsets of young kids and all that stuff. And I totally agree with what he said about the commitment. At 21 years of age, your brain is barely developing. There's a prefrontal cortex of it. That's a part of your brain that deals with decision-making and, and all that, you know, deep thought stuff. You know, teenagers, they're ruled by emotions. 21, that's when it barely starts to develop to form critical thinking. So it's still a little harder to make commitments at that age. And I speak from my, in my own, you know, for myself, I'm 22. It's hard for me to commit. I know I want to be, you know, go into marriage and family therapist, but even then, I don't, I don't know if that's exactly what I want to commit to. I know I want to do a psychology field, but in the sense of commitment, it's harder for 21-year-olds and 22-year-olds to be like, "Oh yeah, for sure, five years." But in my, in my opinion, if they're going to go three years into a program, if they stick out that three years, then they're most likely going to stay. If they didn't like it, they would be gone within the first two years. So I'm not, again, I don't know how the program works. I don't know if they have to stay the three years. But if it's not something they like, they would, they would find a way to opt out of it, you know? So just something about the commitment issue.
All right. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Eddie Mendoza. I just got a question for you. As far as with the commitment issues, how is your veteran outreach program? As far as, you know, for retention, I was, I served in the military and I know for myself, like a lot of, you know, service members that I know, the commitment's never really an issue as far as, you know, between the three and five years. It's just that, that call to duty. So I think there, there's kind of that disconnect there where it's like, I'm looking at this as a job versus a lifestyle and a profession. Do you get a lot of veterans that come through or not?
We do. And we like as many veterans to come as possible. We get with the local recruiters to have them as well. I have some friends in the military to try to send them our way. This is the closest thing you can get to the military. So we do have a lot. We have a lot of veterans working for us.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. At this point, some direction from the council?
Move to approve resolution number 2018-09.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member De Rosset.
Yes.
Council and agency member Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Item number 12, resolution number 2018-10, approving the application for assistance for firefighters grant. Vice Mayor Klein?
I pulled this item more or less for, to make a comment on some clarification. I had asked some questions earlier to Battalion Chief Serpa and I just wanted it to be known on this, you know, for this council's benefit and for the public's benefit, that, you know, this grant that they're applying for is in unisys with Modesto City and Stanislaus County. And the grant is an upwards of a $2 million grant. But with that, the portions are, for the Modesto City portion is going to be about $890,000. The county's portion is going to be about 1.23 million. And the city of Series is going to be approximately $373,000. With that being said, there is no administrative fees, no cost that is being applied. The city of Series will be the administrator of this grant. And in looking at it, if the grant is successful in the city of Series and the Series Fire Department and Battalion Chief Serpa is, is, is good enough, well, I'm not saying good enough, that's, that's the wrong terminology, is successful, okay? The total impact for the city of Series, 10% will be about $37,000. So, you know, in reading this thing with the grant process and the 10% match, you know, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that the city of Series is not have the obligation to match the full amount of the grant. It's, we will just have to match what our proportion is. And Chief Serpa, am I wrong in that assumption? So I just wanted that clarification so everybody, everybody was aware of what it's going to take and impact as far as our general fund money or Major H. Fund money when, when the grant is, is granted. The other thing is, is I've had a few phone calls with different people and I know that Stanislaus County is in the process right now of building out their infrastructure for the 800 megahertz digital system. Currently, it's not countywide. They just completed, I believe it was the city of Waterford. The city of Oakdale is in the process next and then it's going to be expanded. These are for, the radios that the city is requiring or asking for are a, a two-band radio, so they will not have to have two radios in their car. The two-band and portables are being the same thing. So after that, I would like to say that I can fully encourage this and I think that I'd like to thank Chief Serpa for this undertaking. And I think, you know, of the city of Series, even though we're on the low end of it, we're going to benefit tremendously for it. So.
Do you want to make a motion for that? Okay.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second before a call for the vote. Is there anyone on the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay. None. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member De Rosset.
Yes.
Council and agency member Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairperson Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on, we have no unfinished business this evening. We have no public hearing, no new business, and we have one discussion item, cannabis regulation update and direction. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we're following up on some previous conversations we had regarding cannabis. So this, this slide you've seen before, giving the background and history. Better? We'll do this. So this is the history. You've seen this before, going back to 1970 and then into current with the licensing and regulations that are existing at the state level in California. So I won't spend much time on things that we've already talked about, but this is kind of the overview and the framework and we'll get into the details of what this means. So I'll refer to those details on the regulations at state level as MACURSA. That's the Medicinal and Alt Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act that was last amended last year in 2017. So these are the directions. We started this conversation with council back over a year ago, December of 2016, after the passage of Prop 64. Started down this road with several other conversations with council in March and August and then some action that was taken to approve the three development agreements that currently exist. And so the first development agreement was approved in May with Case Manufacturing and then Medical Dispensary approved in November with Roberts or Pacify. And then the last was approved, the second reading of that was at our last meeting in And so here's, here's what's happened since we've really had this last conversation is the update to MACURSA with the new regulatory structure. So when we put Case Manufacturing DA in place in May, they had issued draft regulations for the entire state. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your perspective, the legislature changed the rules on our regulatory scheme and issued a whole new set of laws basically in July, which allowed or required the state agencies to retract those draft regulations and then draft emergency regulations. Those emergency regulations came out in November. So that's what we'll spend some time talking about. So with those emergency regulations, there's three state agencies that are involved in the permitting. So the three that are listed there at the bottom of that slide, so the Bureau of Cannabis Control, referred to generally as Cal Cannabis, then the California Department of Food and Agriculture, that entity is really over the cultivation side of things, and then the California Department of Health is over the manufacturing. So that same information, here's another slide kind of illustrating that same information. And on the first, first circle, the cultivation, and then underneath it, it shows you which of those entities is responsible for the licensing regarding that particular activity. So you can see cultivation is under Cal Cannabis, manufacturing under the Department of Public Health and that bureau, which is the Manufacture Cannabis Safety Branch. And then those other categories, pretty much everything else falls under the Bureau of Cannabis Control. So those is, you know, the bureau covers kind of the biggest broad range of the licensing at the state level. So you've seen this slide before as well. This shows the 20 different license categories. The bulk of them are in cultivation. In the next couple of slides, I'll break this down a little more detail. So, but this is the overall categories, cultivation, manufacturing, testing is kind of its separate entity altogether. Then there's the retail side, which is primarily dispensaries. Distribution is getting in between the licenses. And then microbusiness is a new category that allows you to have combination licenses. And so as we jump into each of the details, so on the cultivation, this is kind of a breakdown. Most of this information comes directly from the state's website and the presentations that they've put together. So this breaks down the cultivation licenses into kind of the different categories for the city of Series. This council has directed us that no outdoor cultivation will be allowed, so you can kind of take that first column out of the picture. And then those would be the other two options for licensing categories if the council were to move more in, in more allowance for additional cultivation licenses within the city of Series. Any questions? Any questions? Feel free to interrupt me as we go along. And this is consistent with previous information. It's now just starting to get a little better framework from the state with the emergency regulations. And then with the manufacturing, either the four licenses here, volatile, non-volatile, then infusions, which is primarily related to the edibles of what is being inserted into edible products being produced in the cannabis industry. And then the packaging and labeling is kind of the last piece of the licensing on the manufacturing. And then under kind of all those other categories that fall under the bureau, these are the licenses that they have the oversight on. So distribution, retailer. And there's two options of retailer. So the dispensary that you can go in and purchase the product. Then they also have a non-storefront retailer where there's basically, it's just a delivery-only license that can be issued at the state level. And that's a decision that the council would want to make if we want to allow that. Currently, we only allow by development agreement, which specifically lists what exactly those, anybody that's in the business can do. So that is something that we have not discussed yet, would be that non-storefront activity and whether that would be allowed.
Question for you.
Sure.
Licensed categories, distributor transport only type 13. If somebody has a distributor transport only for the city of Modesto, or would it be county? Because if they have it just for city of Modesto, could they then distribute and transport into the city of Series?
So the distribution license is, so there's, kind of jump ahead real quick. So, recognize there's two layers of licensing. So there's licensing at the state level and licensing at the local level. So for distribution licensing, anybody that would have a business activity in the city of Series would need a city license to be able to conduct distribution in the city. So from a business to business. So anyone conducting business in Modesto would need a distribution license in Modesto.
Okay, so when it says distributor transport only, isn't me buying something online in the city of Modesto and have it delivered to you?
So the transport only, meaning their only license to transport between these other licensed categories.
Okay.
So between, so they would have a specific license where they are transporting from a cultivator to a manufacturer, from a manufacturer to a dispensary, or any of those variations. Or even from a cultivator to a testing lab, from a testing lab to a manufacturer, back and forth in those supply chains. That's, most distribution licenses are going to have another license because they're going to have that as part of their overall operation. But there is a licensed category specifically to the transport only.
Okay.
Makes sense? So a new one that hasn't really been talked about there, the cannabis event organizer and the cannabis event process. So the state actually created a license process, and this wasn't in the draft early regulations. This came out in the emergency regs, where it actually now have the ability to have cannabis events. And again, that's at the state level. The local level can make the determination if the state. With that two process, again, the state has allowed the local agencies, i.e. the city of Series, to make the determination what we want to allow or not allow. And so if the city says no, then the state will not issue a state license. All right, so where we're at currently, so January 1st, 2018, started the issuance process of the state licenses. And so what they have done because of the emergency regulations is they're allowing the issuance of temporary licenses. So these are valid for 120 days. They do have the ability to extend those for another 90 days under certain criteria and circumstances. But this is the overall process, and they're waiting for those final regulations before they start issuing the annual licenses. And so the way this process works is any applicant, and so in our case, we've got a couple folks who are already operating business. So they make a submittal to the state for a temporary state license. That license is received by the responsible jurisdiction at the state of those three entities we mentioned. They then send an email to our city clerk saying they've got an application for this particular business at this location to do this particular license. So for example, Case Manufacturing has submitted for a type seven volatile extraction process manufacturing at their business location. So that email comes into the city clerk. We have the opportunity to respond to that email. We have 10 days. If we respond positively, yes, that is correct. We have a development agreement with that particular entity, and they are licensed here in the city of Series. Then the state will process and will most likely issue a state license. And then that is in fact the case for Case Manufacturing. If they send us an application for a business that does not have a license or development agreement within the city, and we respond no, then the state will not issue a license. If we do not respond, after 10 days, it is assumed that it is a positive response. So that's the way the process is currently working. So if we say yes, the state can say yes. If we say no, the state has to say no. If we don't say anything, the state assumes yes. So that's a key conversation as we kind of get into the next step with how things are happening currently within Stanislaus County. Stanislaus County is moving forward with a comprehensive licensing concept with, I believe, 61 licenses they're going to be issuing across all of these categories. What they have indicated is they are not going to be responding to the state on temporary licenses. So what that means is anybody applying for a state license to operate in the county will be issued that license regardless of what it is. So which puts anybody currently operating and following local rules in Stanislaus County at somewhat of a disadvantage for the duration of these temporary licenses. Because somebody who could be operating either now or starting up a business, they're most likely going to get a state license, won't have a local license. And until that process is completed in the county, you know, they'd be able to continue operating until the county takes some enforcement action to shut them down. Questions on that? All right. So that's the overview of the licensing and the kind of the changes. And then into the three development agreements that we have in place under the pilot program that was adopted by this council starting back in May. So for Case Manufacturing, as I mentioned, they do have their state license for the manufacturing component. That is include the cultivation piece of their operation. They are currently operating under temporary CFO, certificate of occupancy. And they expect to have their full manufacturing capacity up and running in October for final occupancy in the very near future. So under the development agreement, we anticipated several components. Their license allowed them to have different levels of cultivation. So we basically identified in the agreement the 1A, 2A, and 3A, which are those licensed categories for the different sizes, so up to 10,000 square feet. So that's already included. We also identified the manufacturing component of that. And the agreement had the potential for the distribution transporter license. And in speaking with Mr. Reynolds, with the state regs that now come out, he does need to have that distribution at a bare minimum, just to be able to transfer his product from his facility to a testing lab, he will need to have a distribution license to be able to do that. So we'll need to update his development agreement to reflect that piece. And we, staff would recommend that to move forward. The other thing that changed with the state regs is the relationship with adult use on the manufacturing side. And so in essence, what the track and trace and the other requirements of state regs will require the cultivator to identify what the ultimate use of that particular product is very early in the process for the track and trace, i.e. they've got to decide whether it's adult use or medicinal. And as it goes through that manufacturing process of bottling, that decision has to be made before it leaves the facility, whether it's going to have an M or an A for its ultimate use process. So as you all recall, the agreement is for medicinal only. Mr. Reynolds is asking if we would consider allowing for adult use to allow that product to have more ultimate uses. And again, with the way the structure is set up and how early in the process they have to make the determination. Same product, but the state regs are very specific on how things should be labeled and bottled, and that needs to be made very early in the process. So that's one of the questions that we have, and we'll go through a couple of these others, but we'll take any questions you may have.
So just one question. So if I'm understanding you correctly, because Mr. Reynolds went through the process and had a DA, and we specified the medical use only, there's a request for adult use. However, the 61 licenses that Stanislaus County is issuing, are going to be issuing, because they're not going to respond to the state, those licenses will be able to do both medical and adult?
For the duration of the temporary, yeah, the 120-day temporary license, anybody that would ask for a state license currently would have that ability.
And do we know what's going to happen after that temporary? Could that become permanent?
The county has indicated that once their process is completed and they have all of their licenses issued, they will begin enforcement proceedings on anybody operating without a license. But that part, I, you know, I can't answer to how long that would take and what their process would be for starting and ending those businesses.
Okay.
All right, so the second development agreement that has been approved is the Roberts Pacify, referred to as PCF. Patient Care First is what that stands for. That dispensary, again, development agreement was approved in November. The city issued the cannabis business operational permit on 12/15. We did receive payment of that. First payment was received last Friday. It was not due until the 15th, but the owner wanted to make sure that they were meeting their obligations and got that into us on Friday. And it was a cashier's check, for those wondering how cannabis works. In that particular case, it was a cashier's check. So there's no issues with banking when it's a cashier's check. They did, they have received their temporary license. And under the development agreement, again, because of those same issues we've talked about, they would like to consider the distribution piece of it to control how things get to their facility. That is one of the supply chain issues that folks are considering, is how things go from a cultivator to the testing facility, and then to the, ultimately to the dispensary. So that is something they are interested in, as well as the adult use, reasons we've already discussed.
Their facility that they had in Modesto, they didn't know at that time when they came to us that they would need a way to get their product to them?
They don't have to. The other, the other folks can have licenses as well, but it's a matter of they're asking to have that ability. They don't have to have that ability, but it is one of those things where most businesses are trying to control as much of the supply chain as they possibly can to control their end product. So if they have that transport license, then they're able to go to a cultivator and transport it from a cultivation site to their business, rather than rely on the cultivator or an independent transporter to deliver to their business.
Did they have that in Modesto?
Well, this is a new, this transport licensing is a new requirement. No one's ever had to do anything like that before because this is all new regulation.
No, but how were they getting their product when they were in Modesto?
They use both aspects. So there, it depends on their supplier, depends on, you know, every business is making that determination of what works best for their business, whether they're, and how they make their purchasing decisions, and where that product's coming from. So if you're buying product from Humboldt County, you know, it may be very different from, especially now in Calaveras County, since Calaveras has just made a 180-degree turn on what they're allowing. So all of those things are coming into play with this new regulations. And also, once the new licenses are issued, once you get past the temporary timeframes, it's required to be doing business between licensed folks. So licensed cultivators to licensed dispensaries, that really changes the whole game. And then having that licensed transport is a key component of the supply chain. Again, that doesn't exist, or it didn't exist a month ago, because it was all before those regulations.
And so that first payment that we received on the 20th was how much?
That was $30,000.
$30,000, and that's the floor?
So the way it worked, the way that agreement was structured was $50,000 deposit when the agreement was entered into. The first two months, the floor, $40,000 per month, so the deposit attracted from that $80,000, the difference being $30,000. So we've received $80,000 for two months of activity of that business. And so then, starting in March, would be the payment that's due on March 15th. That would be a sliding scale based on the success of the business.
And so the three agreements that we have in place would garner how much monthly?
Current floor would be $50,000, $40,000, $40,000. So $130,000 per month. And again, the Case Manufacturing is a sliding scale over three years, so it increases each annual year. The other two, there's no increase, but it's a bracketed system. So there's the success of their business, and that number could go up to as high as $100,000 per month. Okay. And the last one, Case Journey, again, that was just approved. It's expected to be operational in February, and asking the same question regarding the adult use as we've discussed. So what's happening around us? We already talked about Stanislaus County, and they are moving forward with a comprehensive licensing structure where 61, I think, is the number of licenses. City of Modesto did put an item on their ballot where they created a sales tax measure for cannabis. It's listed as a range. Indications are they're probably set that number at about 8%. And they are looking at upwards of 10 dispensaries is the current number that's being kicked around and discussed, as well as number of other licenses. And they're hoping to have that process wrapped up sometime in the middle of 2018, if not sooner. Riverbank has gone through and approved, they approved one dispensary, and then the process of another, if I believe correctly. They also had some interesting debates in their community. City of Patterson has issued six licenses, so three cultivation, no, I'm sorry, three dispensaries, two cultivation, and one combined cultivation manufacturing facility. City of Oakdale is wrapping up their process. They haven't issued any licenses yet, but do expect to issue licenses this year. And then I mentioned the Stanislaus County. Currently, the four cities and the county that have said no and don't have any current plans to address it would be Turlock, Waterford, Newman, and Houston, who all have said, no, not in our communities. So that's an overview of what's happening in Stanislaus County. Kind of a similar across the state, from what I'm understanding and talking to colleagues. You're seeing this kind of similar, kind of a 50-50 breakdown of cities and counties. There's some counties who are, you know, pretty consistent across the board, but most folks are seeing some diversity of opinion on how cannabis is being addressed at a local level. So again, for the first time in a long time, the state actually gave us, us as a local jurisdiction, the ability to make that decision, what we feel is in the best interest of our communities. And you're seeing that across the state as it's kind of being played out on a city-by-city basis. So for this evening, what I'm looking for and needing some direction from council is kind of where do we go next? Obviously, we've got a lot of things on our plate, a lot of busy things to work on between our general plan and municipal code update and those type of things. And we continue to get inquiries from folks in the cannabis industry looking for what are the things that this council may be interested in permitting? So the first question that, in looking at our three development agreements, the adult use component, so looking for some direction on that, and whether council is interested in modifying those DAs to allow for adult use. We would start that process of negotiation and working through to get those development agreements updated, if council were so inclined. And then, you know, the second piece of that is license considerations for, do we want to put some numeric limits on the number of licenses we'll consider, whether that's dispensaries only or manufacturing and across the board? So looking for some direction on that component, and then maybe what the next priority is for licensing to look at. And then how that's relative to the state permanent regulations and when those may come into play. So from one aspect, with the current things on our plate, I could easily request that we wait until those state regs come out to do anything else. However, I look for your direction when we approve this last DA. Councilmember Klein, as others agreed, that we would have this conversation about what's next and what do we want to consider before we move forward. So, some of those, and we cover kind of the future. Mike's not liking me. Any future considerations? And then, wanted to just mention, so our next opportunity for a, to put a sales tax measure on the ballot has to be done at a general election, which would be November of 2018. So if we had the thought of expanding our overall cannabis process, it would be recommended from our legal counsel to put an item on our ballot. Even if we don't adopt it and we use just those items under our development agreement process, which we have every right to continue doing, it would be good to have a framework behind us for that type of activity. So something, we don't need that answer today, but something to consider for the future. So. And then last piece would be the administrative guidelines of thinking about what framework we'd put in for staff as we consider other applications as they come in in the future. So again, those, not looking for direction on those two items tonight, but just wanted to give you a heads up some of the other things that we're working on relative to this topic. So primarily, these are the questions that we're looking for and any other items you may have.
Okay, before we get into it, Vice Mayor Klein?
I got a couple of questions first off. If we wait for the state permanent regulations and the state does temporary licensing for distributors, for adult use, and whatever, how does that affect us if we don't have those things in place?
If we don't allow them, we say no. And the state won't issue a state license unless we say yes.
If we decide to pursue a local tax, okay? What does that do to our development agreements?
We would have the decision to, whether to give those development agreements an opportunity to, it would be a negotiated item. We would have to make that determination. How do we want to deal with those? In particular, we could exempt them, would be one option. Or we could terminate the development agreements and rely strictly on the tax. So that would be a decision we would need to make.
Okay, well, let's start with the adult users. Is there any comments on this item? My, I mean, I'll go ahead and start and give my comments. You know, leave it to the state and probably the county to go ahead and mess everything up, you know? I mean, here we have two of the businesses that we've had come into town. We put them through a strict development agreement. We go and we vet the whole process. And then because the state can't get their house in order, they just said, well, we're just going to allow everybody to have everything. And so now, our two businesses that we have, if we don't allow the adult use, what I'm hearing, would be at a distinct disadvantage. And if I were them, I would have said, man, why the hell do I even go through that process with the city of Series? Because I can do what I want, and now... And now Stanislaus County is going to have 61 people, if I'm hearing correctly, that would be able to do what they want. Is that a fair statement?
Mostly, the but it's only temporary, that 120 days.
Everything with the state's only temporary, right?
Well, I mean, well, the state's obligated with their state like the licensing, the emergency regs are only good for this our calendar year 2018. So those emergency regulations expire December 31st, 2018.
Well, this was the same entity that said they were going to have it in place by January 1st of 2018.
I didn't say I believed him. I'm just telling you what the regs say. So in the grand scheme of things, it is a temporary situation. And I think anybody who is going down a regulatory process of putting in a licensing process will have, you know, a pretty difficult time not enforcing those regulations because of kind of the similar situation we have. We've got a relationship with with entities whose business is dependent on the entity, you know, doing the regulation, so i.e. for the county. Once they issue 61 licenses across the board, there's going to be a tremendous amount of pressure on them to enforce those folks who don't have a local license. But I don't know what that timeframe is.
Well, my opinion is I don't think that we should hamstrung the businesses that we have that we've approved. Again, it all bets change when the state obviously made this determination. So my opinion is is that I think we should allow it.
I agree. You know, I mean, at the very end of the day, it's kind of like we're the two are I didn't cheat, did I now? You know, we have both on the outskirts of town for the most part. As you first come in to Series and then way out over by the ponds, they call them. But $130,000 a month to our general fund is a huge thing. And I agree that we don't want to kind of tie their hands and not allow them the opportunity to do the things that they're that they're doing there. You know, I've seen the one over there off Angie and it looks like it's doing really well. I just think that it's it's going to be a win if 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 we do it. And if we don't, then I think it's it's not going to be good. Because if they want to, they can get it in Empire, they can get it on the other side of Modesto. I mean, already there's seven dispensaries open right now in Modesto, but.
I would agree with you, Mayor, and you, Councilman Drossit. I think, you know, the consideration here, I have to look at any business and I know this is different, but it's legal. It's a legal business. It's something that at least the state of California and the voters have voted for. So saying saying that, you know, it's no different than, you know, we're putting a Walmart. We had this argument a long time ago, right, down at this corner or leaving it there or bringing in something different and, you know, the unfair competitive advantage that we talk about because this store over here could sell cheaper than this store. I mean, I've always felt like, you know, I'm in the business of sales and, you know, I may not always be the least expensive, right? But I have the opportunity to compete. And I think, you know, we have hand tied these folks that are doing business with us today. And I guess I have to ask myself if they had known all this. Because the state never gave us, I mean, I've been involved in this now for a number of years working at the league level. And, you know, it was always offering back and forth, back and forth. What are we going to do? What are we going to do? You know, we had to protect ourselves. Thank God, at least we can make the decisions here and the state doesn't make them for us. I mean, that was a huge win for for local government. But I I just feel like that, you know, they should have a right to compete. And, you know, if we don't give them that right, then, you know, they're going to compete around us. And, you know, it's going to hurt us financially. And, you know, bottom line, that's why we're doing this for the finances of Series, unfortunately, you know? But I I really feel like that, you know, it wasn't wasn't us setting up here or maybe nobody out in that room that ever voted for it, but the state of California did. The voters voted, so it's here. So, you know, we're going to regulate it, we're going to watch it and it's going to, you know, be a situation down the road. I don't know where it's going to go. But at the at this point, I would have to agree that, you know, with the with what we put on these, both of these business with the developer agreements, I think that it was, I don't, I would have to ask myself, would they have done that if they'd have known this? I don't know that they would have. So, you know, that'd be they'd have to answer that and I'm not going to ask them to. But at the same time, I would have to agree with the Mayor and Councilman Drossit.
Councilmember Rhino?
You know, I can remember when we first had the discussion about medicinal dispensaries and adult-use dispensaries, we all said no to both of them. Then we changed our mind about the medicinal. But everyone was still, everyone on this council was still absolutely adamant about no adult-use dispensaries. I'm curious why three of you, what what made you change your mind? Because at that time that we said that, we knew that Modesto or the county could still have adult-use dispensaries. I just don't, I'm curious to understand what, why you've changed your mind when everyone was adamant, no adult-use dispensaries.
It was only, do you mind if I go, Mayor?
Go ahead.
No, this was when we very first talked about it.
It was only medical, it wasn't voted in yet. The state of California did not have it voted in for adult use at the time.
When we first discussed it, everyone said absolutely no to both of them. Then we changed and said yes to medicinal, but absolutely no.
No to the dispensaries. I remember that. I said the same thing, but at the very end of the day, it wasn't a legal thing that you could do. Adult use was not legal, it was only for medical. And here we had a great opportunity because one of the things that you can do right now, I could get on the phone and I could call a person that I could find on the internet and I could get a medical card tomorrow. I mean, at the very end of the day, if they want it, you can go over to Crow's Landing and get a medical card. What we have in Series is we don't have very many opportunities for for the financial dollars that are coming in. And if I had my, I don't smoke marijuana, but if I had my druthers, I wouldn't have it at all in Series. But it's going to be, you're going to have a Walmart in Modesto, you're going to have a Target in Turlock, vice versa. And and Series is going to lose out on that dollar. And again, if we, I think we're regulating just perfectly fine. I think we have created a great game plan, all five of us. And but at the very end of the day, I completely understand what you're saying, absolutely. But it was illegal and now it's legal.
And and also, let me ask you, the post facility, would you consider that a Series location? It's not, it's the city of Modesto. I don't know if Dr. Ensley has moved forward with it because I see a G3 sign there. But there was talk from the mayor of Modesto that he was going to be purchasing that and that he was going to develop that for cannabis campus.
Right.
In my opinion, that's in the city of Series, but it's not.
It's not in the city of Series.
I know it's not, but it's as close as anything else out here. So I would ask you the same question, what changed with you? You voted yes initially and then voted no. So equally as well, as more information has come up, you know, it, we've looked at it and said, okay, you know, I'm I'm open to that. Again, I agree with Councilmember Lane. This, I mean, I don't believe in it, trust me. I I don't, I'm not a, I don't partake and I don't believe in it. But the voters of California did. And my job is to administer what they wanted. And so as the state continues to change their rules and regulations, that's another thing that I'm going to bring up. You know, I personally would like to give the city managers some latitude to deal with discussions like this. I don't want to keep coming back to the council every other week because the state's changing their mind on everything. And it seems to be what is happening in this case here is, you know, they're they're, they don't know what they're going to do. So as they begin to solidify those regulations, I would think I personally would like to give him the ability to to deal with those. Obviously, if any of these businesses go south, we have development agreements. We can always bring them back for discussion. But again, that's that's just my opinion.
I know, but all I hear is we need it for the money, the money, the money. So are we being greedy? Are we selling the soul of the city for money? I mean, are we are we are we selling our community just so we get this money from cannabis?
I, no, I don't think so.
Well, I guess I would disagree, especially when I heard from some folks that live out by Farm Supply Drive that were upset about that facility going in. And they didn't live within the the public hearing notification, but they feel it's going to affect them. So I don't know, I can't support adult-use dispensary.
Councilmember Klein or Vice Mayor Klein?
You know, I sit up here and I listen to the four of you talk about it. And, you know, I sit here and say, you know what? The initial discussion was for municipal use. The case manufacturing, case journey and the Roberts came into an agreement and their development agreement for the municipal dispensary. They knew what they were getting into. You know, we heard more opposition on the second and more input and and talk on the second dispensary coming in and and its location than we did the first one. And I sit here and say, you know what? We're 22 days into this whole thing. We don't know what we're getting into. We don't know what the outcome's going to be. And I would like to put the adult use on hold for anywhere from a year to two years to see where we're where we're going to stay, where we're going to stand and what's going to happen. I mean, you know, how is it going to affect our police department? How is it going to affect all other services? You know, I I'm not going to say I'm not in support of it and I'm not going to say I'm in support of it. What I would like to see is when it comes to adult use, I would like to see, you know, let's see what this what this is, what it's going to do. Because the development agreements was for municipal uses only. They knew what they were getting into. And right now, I can't support adult use because we don't know what we're getting into. Because it is new. You know, the county dragged their feet and let all these people have their permits. And now they're going to have to go through and shut them all down. You know, I mean, I've heard, I'll tell you and 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 Mr. Wells, I contact you. I heard rumors that, you know, the facility on Angie was just opening up for adult use. I did everything short but go in there and try to see if I could buy it myself, you know, or have somebody else do it. Because I have to trust the city and our staff enough when I hear rumors and I go directly to, you know, the people I should that they know what we're talking about. And, you know, it's it's, I have to trust them enough to to understand how I feel about it. So, you know, adult use, I'm not going to totally block it off, but I would like to see where we stand right now with the two dispensaries we have in place and what the impacts are going to be for the city.
One quick point of clarification, for just the dispensary or dispensaries and the manufacturing? Because we recognize we have three DAs. I just want to make sure I'm clear clear on your, so for the manufacturing DA, they have to make that determination of adult use or medicinal. Are you the same opinion on that development agreement as well?
Well, I I would have to sit there and and tell you, that's something I would I would have to think a little bit more on because I'm looking at more of the adult-use dispensary.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify.
And that's what I'm saying. That's where I was going, the adult-use dispensary is where I'm saying, okay, we need to put a little hold on this and see where we're going to be and what we're doing with the municipal side.
So Mr. Wells, it looks like move forward with the adult use. Three council members would would like to see that.
Discussion items, looking for a direction. Obviously, there's quite a bit of work necessary to do that, but yeah, it's definitely.
I'm fine with manufacturing, but I got to, you know.
Councilmember Lane?
I just want to make a comment, you know, adult use, medical use, whatever it may be, right? Bottom line, it's adult use. That's the bottom line. If you're going to be smoking marijuana or eating marijuana, you know what? If you haven't got an adult-use facility, then you're going to get a medical card and you're going to walk in anyway. That's the bottom line here. You know, this is just another name and it's what the state's throwing up. You know, I can guarantee you that people going into these medical facilities with cards are medically probably not wanting, most of them are not wanting to use it for a medical problem. They're wanting to use it because, you know, maybe it's the same thing liquor does for people. You know, I mean, I think we're we're talking about really not two different things. We're talking about the same thing. You know, I think if we weren't going to consider this at all, we should have just banned banned it completely, which I think would have been a big mistake because it had been all around us anyway and our officers would have dealt with it anyway. They were dealing with it way before these dispensaries ever came in, way before, with people driving high and buzzed and whatever they want to call it today. So, you know, I'm I'm good with all the licenses with the manufacturing side and and with adult side. Because I think, you know what, anybody that's going to use this is going to have to use it responsibly. And if they're not using it responsibly, it's no different than the alcoholic going down the road, drinking and opening up beer and, you know, drinking whiskey, got whiskey between the legs or or got a pipe load sitting on his armrest. It's no different. Unfortunately, that's what the state of California voted for today, unfortunately. But that's kind of where it kind of lies today. And we can't fix that.
Okay. The next, the license consideration. My opinion is I think we should hold tight with what we have. I mean, I don't think we should issue anymore on the dispensaries.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree, but I would like to to expand and and look at the possibilities of of a testing facility. Their closest testing facility is in in Oakland, okay? You know, I would I would like to look at that. Not that I want to open it up for a nursery, but I would like to understand a little bit more about the nursery aspect. Okay, but I'm more more in line.
Nursery, just to clarify, nursery is outdoors and this council has already said.
I would, I would like to have just a conversation with you and me on the nursery aspect, okay? To to know a little bit more, but I would I would I would like to look at the testing because the closest testing facility is in Oakland. So.
I I agree with you, testing.
Yeah. And, you know, the manufacturing side too. I mean, there's some things out there that maybe, you know, manufacturing licenses.
There's hundreds of kind of variations.
Minded to that because.
Well, what I need is some direction as to how many, what types, what kind of.
On the manufacturing side myself. Whether it's, you know, whatever type of edibles or different oils or chocolates or whatever.
Under a development agreement approach?
I think so. I think it's working, right?
It is, just as we get into those.
To have him sit out there and not do it that way.
It just, there's lots of lots of variations on the manufacturing side.
I think that's latitude again.
There's probably 100 different variations there. So I need some direction on, you know, how many, what types. So would you like me to bring you back some information on that side of things? Okay. So the two that I'm hearing so far prior to Councilmember Rhino is some other manufacturing concepts and testing.
Yeah, you'll bring them to us and then we can say yea or nay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And.
But would you like framework for that before I bring a development increment?
I I. Well, yeah, I mean, I vet the vet the business before you go through that process.
That's what I want to look for. Thank you.
Okay, and then.
I'm assuming Councilmember Rhino's is a no to that.
Yes, a no. I always answer that wrong, yes or no.
Yes or no, thank you.
And then do you need to, I mean, we're obviously not waiting for the permanent state regulations, correct? Based on the direction we gave you.
Direction you just given you, you've answered that question.
Yeah, okay. So we haven't answered that question?
Well, no, you did answer the question. What you've just provided direction for, don't we need to wait for state regulations? We'll continue to move forward.
Correct. Now, I I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I will go back to this on some of the minor things. And people might say, what are minor things? I personally don't want to keep rehashing this every other week. No offense, not that it's a great deal, but I mean, my gosh, how many times are we going to beat a dead horse? If the state changes the requirements, I think we should give you the latitude to be able to make some of those changes. But that's just my opinion. You know, I.
I would agree with that. And I would think, you know, legislative updates and that sort of thing. I think we have a placeholder if we want it there.
Of course.
You know, that you could just update us that way instead of having these discussions over and over.
I mean, if it's something where, you know, you want to say, here's what I'm considering and 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 let us know. And then if there's someone that says, I want that to be brought to the council for discussion, then, I mean, perhaps we could do that. But I I just, again, I don't know how many times this thing's going to change.
If we have a real framework of a business coming forward, a DA agreement, then obviously we need to look at it.
Yeah. So I mean, for instance, if if somebody, you know, we get to a point to where we have a manufacturing DA or something and we say, this is what the production is, and then they come back and they want to increase the production. I don't know that I need to know that. to know that, "Okay, they're going to increase the production if we've already given them the approval to that." And no offense, but I, I mean, they're still sticking within the parameter of what we approved. I don't need necessarily, that, that's just kind of, those are the things I'm thinking about. But again, I don't know how the rest of, they feel, so...
You okay with that?
We'll, we'll look at that as we bring back the development agreements. Are there, where there are maybe potential other flexibility that we can include in there, so you know above hand what, what that flexibility is being built in.
Okay. All right, anything else on this?
I, I do have a question. Did I miss something, or was there any discussion on if we're going to limit how many dispensaries we have, or...
Yeah, well, based on what you just said, hold off before we make any other decisions at this point, and we'll look at those other two avenues, and we'll revisit.
So we're going to hold off with just two dispensaries?
That's what we said.
I mean, I want to make sure that, you know...
That's what we said, but then we would have him look at testing and the other thing.
And other manufacturing.
All right. I'm fine.
Nursery stuff.
Ultimately, we will revisit this topic, and we'll need to come up with some framework for, you know, that overall process. But again, everything is still, you know, a moving target, and most, most experts expect 2018 will be the, you know, the, the year of, of trial and error, and then 2019 it should start to stabilize. And most of the experts are expecting that the regulatory framework will most likely collapse into just one. There won't be two, two tracks. Most people do expect that medicinal and adult use will, will collapse into one regulatory structure. We'll see how the politics play out. 2018 might be interesting on politics too, so we'll see how that all shapes up.
Has anybody thrown out the idea of a mobile cannabis truck?
Oh, you name it. It's, you, I get, I get five, at least five calls a week on, you would be surprised on the different varieties of concepts that are being created under, under this industry.
Freeze drying, all kinds.
Oh, you name it. It's, it's a fascinating topic, for sure.
Okay. All right, well, with that, we'll move to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
I think we missed a slide.
Well, no, I'm...
Potential sales tax measure?
Well, that's just future considerations that would come back.
Okay.
Or discuss that. What I was, just from a council perspective, whether you wanted to take any public comment on any of those items. It's a discussion item, so, but it's at your...
He's got to come back.
Yeah. You got to, you're going to come back, right?
Of course.
Okay. So I, I hear there was none? No, okay. All right, this time, any reports from Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing.